...for the purpose of carrying on the official business of the school system. The public is cordially invited to attend board meetings to observe the board as it conducts its official business. Persons who willfully interrupt, disrupt, or cause disturbances at an official meeting may be directed to leave by the presiding officer. And members of the audience should show respect to speakers by refraining from loud comments or other disruptions. Disruptions by any person or persons of a public meeting will be subject to action in accordance with General Statute 143-318.17. We do have a quorum. I do want to say that Vice Chair Hagerty is joining us virtually. And we have all board members present, as well as Superintendent Moore and our board attorney, Mr. Blumberg. If everyone would now join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Always nice to hear student voices. Okay, moving on to our meeting agenda. I know my computer's a little slow tonight. We now move on to our information item, which begins with our superintendent comments. Superintendent Moore?
Good evening. Congratulations to the 44 Magnet Schools that have been honored by Magnet Schools of America with National Merit Awards. This year marks the 40th anniversary of our WCPSS Magnet Programs, and these rewards are yet another reminder of our long history of Magnet School excellence in our district. Three schools were named Top Schools of Excellence: Carroll Leadership and Technology Magnet Middle School, Hunter Gifted and Talented AIG Basics Magnet Elementary School, and Washington Gifted and Talented Magnet Elementary School. These three schools will be in the running for the Top Magnet Schools of America prize. Eight schools were named Schools of Excellence: Khan Elementary, Farmington Woods, Green Elementary, Kingswood Elementary, Lincoln Heights Elementary, Poe Elementary, Stow Elementary, and Ligon Middle. And 33 additional Magnet Schools were named Schools of Distinction. You can find the full list of winners on our website. Our Magnet Schools have been national models for decades, providing innovative program in diverse school settings to the benefit of countless thousands of students. With 44 Merit Award winners this year, it's clear that our Magnet Programs continue to lead the way. Congratulations to all. This week is National School Counseling Week, and students, parents, and staff are expressing their appreciation for our more than 400 outstanding school counselors. School counselors have always played an important part in the development and ultimate success of our students, and their role has only grown in importance since the pandemic. More than ever, students need advice, resources, social-emotional support that school counselors provide. That's why this year's theme, "Helping Students Dream Big," is very fitting. Without dedicated school counselors working to address students' academic concerns, to foster social-emotional skills, and to help them find the right path after graduation, many students would fall well short of their potential. So find a way this week to thank a school counselor, and look for tributes on social media under the hashtag #NCNSCW23, National School Counselor Week 23. February is also Love the Bus Month, when all schools are encouraged to find ways to celebrate their bus drivers, especially during National Bus Driver Appreciation Week, which is next week. Our drivers play a vital role. They are entrusted with the safety of our students, and they are the first and last representative of our school district that students see every day. Our drivers are also stepping up to take additional runs in response to the driver shortage. We truly cannot thank them enough for their steadfast commitment to our students and families. Schools will be hosting special celebrations for their drivers throughout February, and tributes will be posted to social media under the hashtag #WCPSSlovesthebus. The 10th Annual Wake Up &amp; Read Children's Book Drive is now underway through February 28th. Books will be distributed to students at 15 partner schools and 17 childcare centers. Children select books that are free from book fairs to add to their home libraries. Wake Up &amp; Read has provided hundreds of thousands of books to students who need them the most, supporting the development of crucial literacy skills. Find out how you can donate at wakeupandread.org. Excuse me. There's a cough drop in there if you can't tell. Finally this evening, as part of our observance of Black History Month, we asked staff members to nominate a peer who takes initiative and leads by example at the school and in the community. We received more than 70 inspiring nominations, and we will be spotlighting a few of those employees throughout February. Our first spotlight is Barry Smith, Assistant Principal at Willow Spring High School. Mr. Smith has taken the lead on many projects to elevate his students, including starting mentorship clubs, organizing Black History Month programs, and even arranging student trips to the Smithsonian National Museum of African-American History and Culture. Please take a look at this video.
So we created those three clubs, Image, Reflection, and the At Promise Club. At different times, and we met, we selected a group of boys, we met with them weekly, and we had some of the best conversations. I wanted to listen to my students. I wanted to hear them. I wanted them to know that there is somebody that actually cares about what you're thinking. And we would mentor them one-on-one, we tutor them, we do homework together. And of course, at the end of the day, we'd always go outside and go into the gym and play basketball, because that's what they love. I laugh, because if I go down the list of people who inspired me, I'd be calling names all day. So my stepdad and my uncle were the first father figures I had, and it was a wonder to see them be a dad, something that I had craved for. And to have those guys play the role that they played was very important, because it taught me quite a few things I took into the classroom. One of the things I did at Sanderson was I taught African-American history, and a lot of times I would take the students from my class, and we would put together the program. Our auditorium would be filled. I think it held 800 people, people lining up on the walls. Because we decided that what we were going to do, even in tough times, we were going to present the tough conversations in a way that people could accept. The goal was not to create any division. History has created enough division. Our goal was to bring everybody together. So we'd have speeches, we'd have poems, our national award-winning step team would perform all the time, we had a jazz band that would come in. When we walked out of that hour program, you could feel a sense of unity, acknowledgement, awareness, and celebration that can be presented in a way that's acceptable, in a way that, again, brings unity. So I would say, acknowledge this month, celebrate it.
Thank you. That concludes my comments.
I don't know how to follow that, Mr. Smith. We're very grateful that you can be here tonight, and thank you for all you do for our students. And it's...
If I'm not mistaken, you're not at Sanderson anymore, but that's a nationally-ranked step team.
I want to thank board members and staff for participating in our retreat this past Friday and Saturday. We had an informative day, learning about school funding and state funding, the role of a board member, and being able to hear from Dr. Townsend Smith of the Flood Center and North Carolina's, you know, elite educator, Dr. Dudley Flood, in speaking with our board about equity and academics. We also worked on our legislative agenda, finalizing it a bit more in our work session today. And I want to, again, congratulate our mid-year graduates. I was able to attend the mid-year graduations for Apex Friendship High School and Holly Springs High School. It's always exciting to see those students walk across the stage and be able to hear their stories and what they're going to, what they have done in school in their K-12 time, and what they're going to do moving forward. I was able to see at Apex Friendship High School, which was the host site for the middle school All District Honors Band Concert. And to see the work that our middle schoolers do in band is incredible. And I would be remiss if I didn't echo what the two guest directors said, which was that they got them for two days, but it really is the work of our middle school band directors that get those students there. And to see how many of our middle school band directors were there, supporting the event, supporting their students, the work that they do behind the scenes, I just need to take a moment to acknowledge that and to also acknowledge the parents, because being a band parent is not always easy, especially if there is a larger instrument involved, and sometimes a smaller instrument, and learning those first few notes is always music to anyone's ears. And shout out to all of our elementary music teachers during recorder season as well, and those teachers that have classrooms adjacent to them. In my Board Advisory Council meeting, we heard from our Director of Security, Russ Smith, talking about safe schools, which was similar to what we heard in our work session today. Marlo Gaddis and Allison Reed from our Technology Department spoke about digital safety, not only what we are doing as a district to keep students safe, but what it looks like as a parent and in this day and age. And I think what I took was, all the rules that your grandma taught you about being a person and a kind person in the real world are just applied to technology and not being afraid to have those conversations with students, just because it's something that we may not have grown up with. And we also had a presentation from Be Smart, who will be here and presenting later this evening. And I do want to take a moment and say I always appreciate this month, it's a reminder to me, not just Love the Bus and our school counselors who are understaffed and do incredible work, but taking a moment in Black History Month to look and see the origin story of this district, and that this district was led by some trailblazers in order to look and better serve our students, look at integration, how we can better integrate two school districts. And we say two school districts, but that doesn't always talk about the consolidated schools for Black students that were out in the county, that many parents of our students were a part of. Segregation was not that long ago. And I always appreciate, in referencing Dr. Flood, hearing from him, from Vernon Malone, the first board chair of our school district, and those folks that helped pass legislation to integrate the Wake County Public School District. And I know that video lives on our WCPSS YouTube page, and I encourage folks to learn a little bit about the history of this district and the why in how it was formed and why it was formed not that long ago in the late 1970s. So that is the end of my comments. I will pass it over to our Vice Chair, Mr. Hagerty, who is with us online. Mr. Hagerty?
Thank you, Chairman Haffey. I appreciate it. And again, apologies for not being able to be there in person. I'm feeling a little bit under the weather, and I didn't want to bring anybody else down with. So this week, I'd like to recognize a couple of things, congratulate all of our early graduates. I was lucky enough to attend the early graduation at Leesville Road High School that had the biggest early graduation class I've seen since being on the board. And there was so much energy in that auditorium. It was amazing. It was great to see everybody out there, the Leesville Road family, and staff, and all of them. For our BAC meeting this past month, we were lucky to have Dr. Robinson come out and talk to our BAC members and the public about the strategic plan framework. And I know this is something that we're going to continue to work on, but I just, I really can't stress enough how proud I am of the work that we've done to date. I don't know how many of you have seen the My Future NC report that's come out, that's taking a really critical look at the state as a whole and how we prepare students for life after school. And so many of the important questions, so many of the things that they address in that report are exactly the questions that we're examining in our strategic plan and how to prepare all of our students for life, beyond whether it's college, whether it's career, whether it's the military, wherever they might go. So it's just encouraging to see that kind of work. One, I think we're going in the right direction. The feedback that we got from everyone at the meeting was very positive and very helpful, and I want to thank Dr. Robinson and his staff for presenting. Again, I'll just echo the comments that Chairman Haffey had about the retreat. It was great to bring everyone together. We had some really great discussion, a lot of great ideas. It was great to see us come together on so many shared issues of importance. And I think we do have a shared vision for our schools and our students. And we keep it there. I'm looking forward to see the vision that we pay for. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hagerty. Ms. Waters?
Thank you, Chairman Haffey. And it is Black History Month, and while we see and benefit from the contributions of African-Americans all year long, for me, February provides a unique opportunity to highlight the resiliency, the faith, talents, and cultures of a community that has made significant impact on many areas, including science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, along with various others. And so as we celebrate Black History, I hope that we understand how important it is to American history, and ensuring opportunities to learn about it is of benefit to everyone. And so whether you are attending an event this month or reading a book, I hope we all find an opportunity to connect with the past this month. And so I'm so grateful for all the great things going on within our county, and I echo the celebration of our Magnet Schools that have won National Merit Awards. Many of those schools are in District Four, but each one is special and unique and provides such a great opportunity for our students to explore the best of themselves and to engage in learning opportunities that are really unique and powerful and that have lasting impact. So I join in that celebration. And I'd also like to thank a number of the schools in District Four that have welcomed me for visits. I had a chance to visit Rogers Lane Elementary, Fuller, Hodge Road, Southeast Raleigh Elementary over the last couple of weeks, and it has been amazing to connect with our educators and with our students. And just to be in the school building is one of the best parts of serving in this role, to be able to see the great work and excellence that goes on into our school buildings. And all of the schools that I mentioned, and I'll be visiting some of our middle and high schools very soon, but all of the schools that I mentioned were elementary. And just to see how gracious and kind all of our students are in our school communities is so encouraging and inspiring. So look forward to some additional school visits coming up. And I also wanted to highlight a chance I had to go and visit Tools for Schools. It was a really nice opportunity for me to actually get out there. Keith Poston actually worked with me on my very first job out of college, and a lot of people say you won't remember what people said or did, but just how they made you feel. And I remember being a recent college graduate, working in a high-profile Fortune 500 company and feeling way out of my element. And I remember all those years ago that Keith was so encouraging and always pushed for me to have opportunities. And so it's so exciting to see him leading the work that he's doing and to be able to go to Tools for Schools and to be able to volunteer in that role was really powerful. And so I hope I have a chance to go back and see all of the ways that Tools for Schools is supporting all of our educators across the district. And as I wrap up, I want to make note that we are going to have a District Four BAC meeting on February 16 at 6:30, and it will be at Wake Early College of Health and Sciences. And the topic, which is timely, will be on school safety and security. And so I hope you all will be able to join us. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Waters. Ms. Edmonds?
Thank you. Since our meeting on January 17, I've visited several District Five schools. First was Centennial Magnet Middle, where I met a group of students recognized as Centenivators. These students were chosen for their strong leadership skills and are the first group of Centenivators to receive this distinction. They sat with me and Dr. Ashburn, one of our area superintendents, along with their principal, and talked about their leadership roles, a pretty intimidating thing to do as a middle schooler, I would argue even as an adult. But they did a great job, and it was fun to be with them. I've been to Middle Creek High School twice, once for a performance by their honors-level theater students, and then I was there for my first mid-year graduation as a board member, and that was such an honor. I congratulate them and all of our mid-year graduates across the district. I attended Washington Elementary's fifth-grade production of Moana Junior, and those kids did an outstanding job. And I enjoyed the science fair at Combs Elementary. On Saturday, I attended the All County Middle School Chorus Performance. I had to listen to Chairman Haffey and make sure we weren't in the same place. I believe there were 14 of our middle school choruses that participated in that, and it was very short. It was only a half-hour program, but a lot of fun. And I know the students and our choral directors worked very hard to make that happen. Yesterday, I toured Yates Mill Elementary and Swift Creek Elementary, and I want to thank Principals Jenkins and Probst for having me and giving me some of their time. Being in our schools, I giggled a little bit, because Ms. Waters just about quoted what I wanted to say directly, is that is one of my favorite things also about being a board member, is getting into our schools and being among students and educators. One more note about mid-year graduations. Athens Drive High School in my district had their mid-year graduation last Thursday, and I was unable to attend, and I just want to publicly congratulate those students and their families. Mr. Hershey and I attended the National School Boards Association Equity Symposium in Washington, D.C., where we heard from other districts around the country on how they're implementing their own equity policies. And one district in particular has been able to bring licensed therapists into their schools to work one-on-one with students that need those services. These services are provided only with parental consent, and they do work like a private therapy session. However, with the school district being able to bring these professionals into their school buildings, it removes a barrier for the children having access or accessing those services. They don't have to leave campus, and they don't lose instructional time to get to those appointments. So that's just one example I wanted to lift up from some of the sessions that we attended. I want to thank Superintendent Moore and Chairman Haffey for their letter issued on Friday about school safety and what's been recent incidences in our district. And I want to thank them for inviting Be Smart to be present with us tonight. I see you all out scattered about. I'm really glad that you're here. A reminder that the District Five BAC meeting is on Monday, February 13, so that's this coming Monday at 5:30 p.m. at Vernon Malone College Career Academy. All are welcome to attend. And then finally, in recognition of Black History Month and celebrating Black educators, I wanted to lift up my son's kindergarten teaching assistant, Ms. Pittman. So this would have been 2002, and I know that she retired long, long ago, but she was that one, that special, loving, caring adult that my son needed as he transitioned into kindergarten. And I don't know that Ms. Pittman ever became a teacher or chose to take her career past being a teaching assistant, but she, like so many other Black educators in our district, had a positive impact on children, including my child. And so I lift her up in honor of Black History Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Eng?
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Haffey. This past week, I had a very busy week. I recently moved to a new home. It's still in District Three, by the way. And I took a week off to unpack, but also used the opportunity to visit a few schools. I want to thank the principals for their hospitality and showing me around. Specifically, I want to give a shout out to Ms. Sanchez at Durant Road Elementary, Ms. Light at North Forest Pines Elementary, Ms. Bell at Forest Pines Elementary, Mr. Elliott at Brassfield Elementary, and Ms. Trantham at Abbott's Creek Elementary. You all should be very proud of the culture of family, service, and cooperation that I sensed from my tours. Quite a few times I was touring and I saw, you know, the children just would go up to the principal and just give them a big hug, and that was just so sweet. It really touched my heart. This past week, I was also honored to attend and participate in the mid-year graduation at Millbrook High School and at Heritage High School. And I want to thank Dr. Saunders and Mr. Lyons for their invitations. I was very impressed with the group of graduating seniors who, despite having to make major life adjustments because of COVID, they managed to complete their credits early. I applaud their willingness to work hard, to pursue their dreams, and to face the future head-on. This really is an example of the American dream. And while I was at Heritage High, I met Mr. Tyson Ash on my tour of the special ed classrooms, and I wish to congratulate him for being named the North Carolina Mentor of the Year by the Youth Mentoring Collaborative. He was honored in the ceremony at the Governor's Mansion on January 17. His dedication to his job and to the students in the OCS classroom is really inspiring. It gives me encouragement to work hard, even harder, to serve our exceptional students in Wake County. Also, listening to the band perform at Heritage High and the choir perform at Millbrook High during the ceremonies, it really brought back memories of my own high school experience back in Texas. And beyond the academics, you know, some of my fondest memories were, in fact, being in the high school choir and singing at the football games and performing in concerts and, you know, Allstate, things like that. So, Mr. Lyons, I am looking forward to attending the performance of Grease at Heritage High School this weekend with my daughter. And I think that the tickets are still on sale for this weekend and next weekend. And I also would like to invite people to the BAC meeting for District Three. It's coming up on February 27, at Monday, beginning at 5:30 at Durant Road Elementary. So going back to my big move, I am thankful that I didn't have to rent my own moving truck and do my own heavy lifting. Having the perspective of being on the school board, I was thinking about the times when I did have to rent my own truck. And even though I rented and drove the truck all day, I know that ultimately it is still not my truck. And I signed an agreement and made it a point to take good care of it and to return it in the condition that I found it. So we, as school board members, have essentially signed an agreement with you to take good care of your children. And even though the children are in school all day, ultimately, they are your children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hershey.
Thank you, Chair. Couple of quick notes. First, our BAC meeting is going to be changed from the 20th to the 27th. It will still be at noon, and I am still working on a location, and that is a message to my wonderful district schools, to whoever would like to host will have the opportunity. I want to congratulate all the mid-year graduates at Sanderson High School. It was an honor to be on the stage with you. Really wonderful celebration. Was that clapping? Because that would have been okay. I want to congratulate, you know, every week we congratulate different groups of people. There was a special award given out to a crossing guard at Douglas Elementary School. Yes, and she is at Joiner as well, but I see her at Douglas. Ms. Teresa Gill, she was honored by the Raleigh Apex NAACP with the Community Hero Award, and she is an amazing person. And she remembers kids going, she's not sitting over there, there are people nodding. She gets to know the kids and the parents, and you have... She gets to know the kids and the parents, and you have people who drive by who are now going to Carroll, shout out to Carroll, which is an outstanding middle school now. But they stop and say hi because they remember, and she remembers them, and she remembers the story, and it's a well-deserved award, and I encourage the city of Raleigh to please pay them more because they are woefully underpaid. I want to thank Dr. Ng for allowing me this next bit. So I am a former wrestler and wrestling coach, and it was very cool to see, and I did not go to the match, but I saw it posted that at Wake Field and Millbrook High School had the first all-women's dual meet competition in Wake County history. And I would like to thank and recognize our superintendent for women's wrestling becoming a sanctioned, do I have that word correct, a sanctioned sport next year, which is fantastic and well-earned, yes, indeed. I want to wish good luck to our student athletes because now is conference, regional, states. So we have a lot of tremendous student athletes who excel both on the court or the mat or the pool, but also in the classroom, and they are wonderful kids. And I want to take a minute to remind our wonderful parents to remember that the officials are doing their best. We do not make a lot of money, and we will make mistakes, but we are trying our hardest to give that opportunity to the kids, and we have officiating shortages, and part of the reason is some of the abuse that we get for not being paid very much money. If you want to yell at ACC officials, that's fine. I also want to thank the, I also like to recognize our HR department here at Central Office. I received an email about a volunteer issue and a question. I've seen questions and issues about backlogs and are we getting background checks processed. Well, at the beginning of the year, we were inundated with volunteers, and I want to thank everyone and encourage everyone to continue to volunteer at schools. And everything got backed up, as is the case when you have a new tutoring program and you have the normal volunteers who want to be in schools. Our HR department did an excellent job of working through that process. The process now to get cleared is about one to two weeks. And as an example, they had 70 today, or yesterday, when he sent me this email, I should say. So they go through a lot, and they do an excellent job, and sometimes we don't recognize all the work that they do. So I wanted to give a shout out to them as well. And I feel like I'm forgetting something. Oh, I know. Stow, I will see you hopefully tomorrow, bright and early with some good news, and I will see Carroll, which I am, again, congratulations on their recognition, and I hope they win the Magnet School of the Year Award, or however it is phrased. Ah, it's so cool. But I look forward to seeing you all on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hershey. Ms. Johnson-Hussler.
Thank you. And Chair Mahaffey and Superintendent, I hope you will not mind me taking a point of privilege and asking Mr. Smith to stand up. We could see him, but everybody else couldn't, and he actually is in the room. And because I know him, he is slightly embarrassed, but it is our first recognition, and I think it was beautifully done. And I will be sure to let my husband know you brought him into the room because he was in one of the photos from all the work that I know you from at Sanderson, and I'm extremely glad to have you in District Two at Willow Spring High School. I've been in your very warm auditorium during several of those Black History Month programs. I'm still going to go down in history that I absolutely love, love, love seeing your educators on that dance floor doing the electro slide or whatever they might be doing, in addition to the great talent and oratorical skills from our students that are witnessed during that time. So thank you for the work that you are doing and the work that you continue to do on behalf of our students. And I know what a reward it is for the educators in the building because I've heard personally how grateful they are for the work and commitment that you have to our students. So thank you very much. And thank you for allowing me to take that point of privilege. Only because I know him did I take that point of privilege, so thank you very much. Superintendent has already mentioned school counselor appreciation. The great news is we have a new board, so I will repeat this, that each of you, especially for new board members, as your school counselors apply for RAMP, which is called Recognize American School Counselor Association Model Program, which is more like a certification for their school counseling program, each board member is invited to hear about what they're proposing to be a recognized school counseling program in our schools. It is another, as you've heard our board members say, there are many and multiple wonderful experiences of being in our schools. That's another one to hear what our school counselors are doing on behalf of our students and our educators. And so I am very proud to say, last year, actually last summer, I got to go to Willow Spring Elementary to hear their presentation that they submitted to North Carolina State Board for the Diamond Award, which was my first experience, and they won. So we are very proud of the Willow Spring School Counseling and their two school counselors at Willow Spring Elementary School who were recognized this week, and they'll be recognized again this summer by the American School Counseling Association for the Ramp in Excellence Award. And I cannot even begin to tell you how thoughtful they were for student health and wellness, for our students, for our educators. Returning board members heard me share this last year, still one of my favorite, is several teachers to create wellness, made little cubbies under their desks that had wallpaper and lighting and pillows. That was a safe space for students who needed to take some time for themselves to regroup, which I think is a great way to redirect student behavior, especially when our students are finding themselves needing that space. And so she had water challenges, exercise challenges for health and wellbeing of our educators, and they adored it all throughout the school. They have little cubbies where if you're walking down the hall and you can't stay in line, there's a little reminder that you can pick up and take a look and think about what's happening to practice your breathing, to re-center or refocus. So I wanted to share again, for those of you who haven't heard, the wonderful work that they did and the great recognition I believe they deserve for Diamond Award. I also share that because sometimes ideas spark for other people, for amazing ideas that can happen across our district. So congratulations to Willow Spring Elementary counselors. I also, so District Two already had its BAC. When I first started on the board, I'm an adult educator, so I train adults for a living, and so each year I generally facilitate a open discussion, and this year, we brought it back. We didn't do it during COVID. And I am very grateful for our administrators, our educators, and our parents in the room, including our central service staff who was there, who actively indulged me in an open participation. I have flip charts. I was not as quick as our comms team and Ms. Luton's team. I have not made a beautiful document based on the flip chart paper that I got from over 50 people who attended our BAC, and I'm still getting feedback from parents, which I think speaks volumes to hearing from. Our constituents aren't just our parents, but it's our educators, it's our students, it's also our administrators. And it was all anonymous, so I got a lot of great ideas and tips and a lot of amazing feedback that they enjoyed being able to openly share what they'd like to see or expect from the school district. So thank them all for participating. I thought they would dread it, but they were all gracious. So our next BAC will actually unroll, I'll roll out all the feedback that we heard and where there was overlap and where those things fit. Committee chairs, I actually put them in buckets of your committee, so whatever came out of it, the committee chair will adhere. This is what District Two finds of interest for each of our committees. That's how I put them in buckets so that we'd be able to easily identify the ideas and recommendations that were shared by our District Two BAC. I had the great opportunity, following our BAC, to have a little fun in a very, very hot gym at Garner High School. I'd never seen this. They had a charity event, and it was Volley Bros', which, those of you who follow young people, bros is a major thing, not bra, but bros, very close in language. But there were roughly a half a dozen teams separated by grade, all boys, male identified, and some of them had great uniforms, cutoff pink t-shirts, onesies, full sleeper onesies. But they played each other based on grade, and the final winner played the girls' volleyball team. I was very nervous because I was like, the girls' volleyball team has to win. They did pull it out, but the team spirit was there, and surprisingly, it was a jam-packed gym full, not just of our students, but of teachers were there. And it was also great to see our educators support our students. You saw students running up to their teachers, hugging them, thanking them for staying very late after school. High school gets out shortly after 2:00. We were there until shortly after 9:00 PM, and those educators were still in that gym cheering on our students, and of course, it was a fundraiser. So I like the creativity that we see our students and our schools come up with to actively keep our students engaged. And the following morning, thank you to the Raleigh Chamber who invited myself and Chair Shanika Thomas to speak into the work that we do. Not only is board members on the Wake County Public School Board and the Board of Commissions, but also, it's February, it's Black History Month, and it was certainly great conversations. Ms. Thomas, actually, like many of us, were not able to attend because of being under the weather, and guess who joined me? Ms. Susan Evans, who served on the Wake County Board of Education as well. And Ms. Thomas and I will be returning to speak with them on February 15th. But again, a reminder of the history in Wake County. Some of you know, when I came onto the board in 2013, it was the first time in over 40-year history that two black people sat on the Wake County Board when I joined Keith Sutton on this board. And so that is a part of our history. It's a very rich part of our history. And I will end on this. Our chair mentioned Vernon Malone and the amazing video that all of you should see that speaks to the merger of Raleigh City Schools and Wake County Public Schools. But as a black woman, during Black History Month, I would be remiss to not mention Clifonia Wimberly, who was the black woman who joined Vernon Malone when they merged the schools. He was on one board, she was on the other. And so, again, when I came on, it was a 40-year history, and I still very much so acknowledge that. And still today, we sit at this board with a great deal of history that in 20, 15 years, maybe, even less than 20, students will be recognizing the history that Wake County continues to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson.
Thank you. I have to get used to using this mic. I often joke, and it's a running joke that I'll continue to say, that although I was a teacher, I did not have a teacher's voice, so thank God for technology. So I just want to start by saying, you know, this has been a very, last week has been a very interesting week for our schools and our safety that we've seen, and I am always deeply concerned and moved by those because of, as a teacher, former teacher, I understand what those code red lockdowns feel like, sitting, you know, sitting in that classroom. And it's a struggle that we all are in together, and I just want to thank our director, Russ and his team and our districts for providing that leadership and for the schools that were affected by that as well. And again, this is an issue that we all must come together, not just the board, but our collective municipalities and government to work to address these issues in collaboration. Since the last meeting that we've had, I have been very busy in District Nine. I've set a very ambitious goal of getting to all 25 schools before the year is over with, and we got some work to do, but we're halfway there, Dr. Sexton and Mr. Enz and I and Mr. Williams. So I want to start by saying congratulations to all of our mid-year graduates. I had the pleasure of attending Apex High, Cary High, Green Hope High School, and Score Academy all last week. So to those graduates, I wish them all the best in their future endeavors, and, you know, the world is theirs to accomplish, and I'm looking forward to the great things that they're going to do and the mark that they're going to leave on our society. I also had the pleasure of attending and touring Rudy Creek Magnet Middle School with Principal Evans, and happy retirement to Principal Evans as he is getting ready to depart. So I wanted to make sure that I was able to get there before his retirement. I was also able to attend with Dr. Sexton the announcement of the new principal at West Cary Middle School, Dr. Savage, so looking forward to his leadership and the great things that he's going to do in the district again at West Cary Middle School. And then that following week, I took a tour with the administration and Dr. Sexton again to see the great things that are happening in West Cary Middle School. Finally, Mr. Enz and I were able to attend the completion assembly at Connections Academy, and we were able to recognize those students who will be returning back to their base schools. And I wanted to thank Principal Perkins and AP Lassenter for that invitation and just seeing the great things that those students are doing at Connection Academy. Principal Perkins had often stated that the students there do not like to go back to their base schools because of the environment, and it is a great environment. I'm so proud of those students and wishing them the best as well. And I know there is a school that I have forgotten. Please charge it to my brain and not my heart. But in this moment, as we are celebrating Black History Month, I just want to say that black history is American history, and the two are always interconnected. And I sit here as a black person, the youngest black board member, and, you know, here we are. I think there's been five, six black board members in the history of Wake County, and I think that we have a lot more work ahead of us, but I'm also reassured and inspired of the great things that we are going to achieve in the future and honored to join my two comrades, Ms. Waters and Ms. Monika Johnson-Hussler, as we show our students that truly from here, anything is possible. You can go from the board table to the general assembly to the county commissioner and beyond because those are the powers that you have, and that is the power that we possess. And, you know, studies have shown that students who are, who have black educators are more likely to further their education and to go to college and do great things. I hope that those students would choose North Carolina A&amp;T, the greatest HBCU in the nation. Aggie pride is truly worldwide. Aggie pride. So thank you, Chair Mahaffey, and I look forward to continuing to get out to the district and watching those great things. So thank you.
Mr. Swanson, I think we're very glad right now that there can't be any rebuttals to your statement, but I'm sure that there will be some ones made later by some of our board members. Ms. Cotfield.
Thank you. I have continued to tour some of our schools. We've enjoyed the individual, I've enjoyed the individuality of our schools, the staff, and I love peeking in the classrooms to see what the students are up to, which is always great to see all those smiling faces coming back at you. I do definitely miss our middle school and elementary school as my children are in high school, but it's great to go in there and see all the projects and everything they're up to. I have a few more to visit and excited to get out to see them. I was excited to go and join, Roseville High School had their early graduation. They had 73 students that were able to graduate early. It was wonderful to see the very excited crowd of family and friends out for those graduates. You would think that we were at an NC State game. They were very excited, but that was great to see. Due to conflict, I was able, I missed the East Wake High School, but they also had an early graduation, so I want to extend a congratulations to those students as well. I do want to express my sympathy for all the families that have been under stress this last week. I know that the worry still continues. I want to thank our staff, our principal, and law enforcement. This was not easy on any of us. I'm unsettled and saddened that we have so much work to do for our children, and we cannot ignore the need for community involvement. Community engagement is so, so important right now, and it'll take a village, and that's our village. We are dedicated to continuous work on school safety for our children to learn and grow in a healthy environment. This crisis we're in is not something that our family or friends or children had asked for, but it is something that we all need help with. The pandemic may have passed us, but like a hurricane, it left us with a lot of damage. Our children are suffering, and this, it did not lead them when we put them back in school. We have record-high depression and suicide rates, children suffering, loss, conflict, social media stressors, and much more. It's just a lot to have on their shoulders, and we need to get to a better place and a better path for them. I encourage the families to find more ways to communicate and engage with their children and communities, and their community on awareness and how to be involved. One thing to remember is that these guns were brought into the school. In North Carolina, you have to be 18 years old in order to purchase a gun. It's a felony to sell, give, or even transfer a gun to a minor. We need to be more diligent as a community and as a whole. If you're a gun owner, please lock it up. Please be safe. No one ever looks back and regrets taking that extra step. Not all gun owners are unsafe. I am by no means saying that. Some are innocent in thought and in intent. We just need to come together and be diligent. We have to. Lock them up. Talk about safety with your children. Talk about what happens when these kids get caught or in trouble. Let them hear the con- Let them hear the consequences so that they know the severity of the situation proactively. And think twice before they're able, they want to try and pull off either a prank or what they might think is a harmless prank, or show off a gun. But also to make sure that they know who they can reach out to if they need help or if they're upset. Discuss a plan and what that might look like. It may be a step, a two-step program, two-step or three steps. Choice A, even if that's not available, go to choice B. If that doesn't work, then choice C, but somewhere that they know where to go and have a plan. Check your kids' bags. Ask them specifics about their day and classes. Keep the communication going. We just never know when they need it most. Wake County has some good policies at keeping our children safe, and understanding the code red and code yellow system, I think, will help some of our parents in how unsettled they feel. Know that your child is locked behind a door to keep them safe while the powers that be are trying to get to the solution so that they can communicate with you and keep your child safe. These are in place to make sure until the situation is fully understood and cleared that your child is in a protective space. These things can happen within minutes because of the quick responses in play. I just hope the parents are insured with no understanding that information, that it is not to diminish the unsettled, unnerving feeling of parents on the other end of that message. We will work diligently to always improve safety and keep that conversation going. In light of this past week, I'm switching my board advisory committee to discuss more about safety so everyone has a better idea of what that looks like and how we could come together as a community and how we can engage with each other to move in positive directions. I will still at the end try and have a breakout session and a box for some comments so that people can get more engaged in what they would like to see in our community. That will be at Sanford Creek at 6:00 this coming Monday on the 13th. So this month is Black History Month, and I was able to see some of the schools preparing their celebrations in honor of Black History Month, of their great leaders and influences. We also have Read Across America, which is February 27th to March 3rd. I look forward to volunteering and coming in to see our schools, to be in our schools and be part of this. So please consider coming into your schools and volunteering and helping any way that you can. And I'd like to give a shout-out to my hometown Heritage High School. I know Wing has mentioned that. I know it's not my district anymore, but I hope that many will come and attend. One of my favorite things is going to Heritage High School. They have great plays all the time. I see them. This year, they have Grease, which is from February 9th to the 19th, one of my favorite high school plays or movies. So please go and enjoy. I will promise you will not be disappointed. And thank you, everybody. Please stay safe.
Thank you, Ms. Cottfield. Don't worry, Cougars. We've just got one more thing of business, and then we're going to get to your part. We do need to approve our meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson-Hossler and Ms. Waters. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. I am now going to introduce Drew Cook, who will introduce our recognition of Black History Month. Mr. Cook.
Thank you. And first of all, to the kids in front of us back here, we're so super patient. Quiet as they've run to the restroom here and there, we're almost there, kids. And I want to say first, there are some presentations, obviously, that are more fun than others. And I've got to say, this one is right at the top of the list. So I'm looking forward to sharing with you all this evening. We do appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening to share a little bit about our district celebration as we've referenced in recognition of Black History Month. This is the first of two presentations that we'll do this month, with the second one planned for the February 21st board meeting. Today, as we publicly kick off Black History Month in our district, we're excited to have the opportunity to honor and celebrate the achievements of African-Americans and recognize their central role in American history, our history. As a school system and as a community, we honor progress made with great pride and also commit to continuing the significant work that still lies ahead. Although African-American history is integrated throughout the school year in our core standards, curriculum resources, and instructional practices at all levels and across multiple content areas, our teachers and our students both make concerted efforts throughout February to further explore significant African-American leaders and associated events through a variety of educational and enrichment activities. As we do so, we also recognize that it is important to acknowledge our local black leaders in the Wake County Public School System community who relentlessly focus on creating a better future for all of our children and who significantly contribute to the advancement of public education as a whole. As Superintendent Moore mentioned a few minutes ago, we did recently ask school and district staff to nominate individuals who inspire their work. We'll be featuring those individuals on our website and social media platforms in the days and in the weeks ahead. And speaking of those inspirational and innovative leaders in our school system community, we are fortunate and honored to have one of these individuals here with us this evening. At this time, it is my privilege to reintroduce you to Mr. Barry Smith, Assistant Principal at Willow Springs High School and an active member of our community. A former colleague at Sanderson High School nominated Mr. Smith for our Black History Month recognition. In the nomination, his colleague credits him for, quote, "putting Sanderson High School on the map for developing outstanding Black History programs and opportunities for all students." And I would imagine that that work is well underway at Willow Springs High School of putting them on that same map. As such, there is no better person to talk and to share about the importance of celebrating Black history and what those celebrations and activities can look like in our schools. So, Mr. Smith, welcome. And I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Chair Mahaffey. Excuse me, Superintendent Moore and board. I am honored to represent my colleagues in discussing the work in our schools in celebration of Black History Month. For myself and many colleagues, Black History Month is a time to spread awareness and learn about the Black community's rich history, traditions, and culture. When you visit our schools this month, you will find displays that feature art, literature, and history that reinforce our academic programs and emphasize the history and significance of African-Americans throughout history. You'll also hear our students, students, excuse me, express their learning and personal experiences through assemblies, programs, and classroom-specific activities. While I was teaching at Sanderson High School, I had the opportunity to work with several passionate teachers, administrators, and staff members from various departments. There are very few things that you achieve alone in education. Therefore, it is important for me to highlight that what we achieve, we did it together and with the, and through the collective efforts of many. For Black History Month, we spent countless hours working with our African-American History students, our Image Club and Wise Club students, planning a school-wide assembly that featured poems, spoken word, Who Are My Monologues?, Did You Know Monologues?, songs, step-team performances, music from a local jazz band, and several guest speakers. The first year we did this, the auditorium was a little less than half-full. By the third year, there was standing room only. Our principal had to turn classes away. As a matter of fact, we had to end up having two programs to accommodate the students and teachers who couldn't make it to the first program. These programs were not mandatory for teachers or for the students. Therefore, we counted a great victory that we earned the trust of our colleagues and students. Our goal was always to encourage and spread awareness and promote unity and to further educate our audience about Black history in a way that would best meet the needs of our school. One year, we took part in a popular trend when we asked teachers to decorate the outside of their classroom doors with the help of their students for Black History Month. This was completely optional, but we take pride in the fact that over 90% of our teachers participated. Our classroom doors and walls were covered with pictures and information about Black scientists, mathematicians, doctors, lawyers, politicians, authors, actors, athletes, kings and queens. Also, for us, learning about Black history didn't just take place in the month of February. Twice, we took almost 100 students on an overnight field trip to Washington, D.C. to visit the National African-American History Museum. All who have ever coordinated an out-of-state overnight field trip know the grueling task it can be in collecting money, getting sponsors, getting signatures, medical plans, getting chaperones, organizing the sleep arrangements, having a meal plan in place, and answering the questions and concerns of our parents and guardians. By the morning of the field trip, you're so tired because you stayed up all night tying up all the loose ends. But the moment we would enter the museum, the look on our students' faces made it all worth it. And that's my message tonight. It is worth it. It was worth all the late nights and the early mornings. It was worth every penny spent and every sacrifice made. Did we have some pushback? Absolutely. But it was still worth it. See, the driving force of its value is our students. It can be challenging to measure and quantify and collect data on the long-term impact you're making on someone's life. Sometimes it's not until years later that you get that unexpected email or knock on the door from a former student who reminds you of something you said or did that changed their life. Yes, it is worth it. Agencies across the country spend thousands, sometimes millions, and several hours trying to find ways and solutions to help bridge the gap, the achievement gap, between our underachieving students and our students that excel. But I hope we never lose sight of the fact that a solution could be learning more about how Black history does not begin with slavery, nor does it end with slavery. Our contributions to history are so much more. Perhaps learning about the contributions that so many blacks made to history may one day create that aha moment and encourage our black students to pursue careers that they otherwise would not. Lastly, it is important for me not to end it there because it's not just black students who could benefit from hearing our stories. No, all students from all races, cultures, and backgrounds could benefit because our story is good enough for everybody. To end our celebration today, I have the honor of introducing some very special guests. Please welcome Dr. Shayna Barr and the Swift Creek Elementary School Choir. They will be singing the National Anthem and Lift Every Voice and Sing, which is often called the Black National Anthem. Lift Every Voice and Sing was written, was a poem written by James Weldon Johnson and set to music by his brother, John Rosamond Johnson. Our school, our choir, I'm sorry, excuse me, a choir of schoolchildren at the segregated Stanton School where James Weldon Johnson was principal first performed the song to celebrate President Abraham Lincoln's birthday. The song was later used as a rallying cry during the Civil Rights Movement of the 1950s and 1960s. I will now pass the podium to Dr. Barr.
Well, so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight. O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bomb's sting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Do I need to move them my shoes? How's that?
Lift every voice and sing till the heaven ring, ring with the harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the listening skies, let our resolve loud as the rolling Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has brought us. They sing the rising sun, oh, new day begun. Let us march on till victory is won. Let us march on till victory is won.
And, Mr. Smith, thank you for what you said. Black history is American history, and it is alive and well in our schools and will continue to be, but certainly needs to be brought forward this month. We appreciate you being here tonight and all you have done. And I can't add to what Ms. Johnson-Hossler said, so I will just say ditto. We're going to let our students and their families be ready for school the next day and head out. Thank you for sharing your children with us. And we are going to move on to our next information's item, which is a little more somber. Given all that we have seen throughout our district, we felt that it was important, in the spirit of partnership, to share resources with the community. So we've asked representatives from Be Smart to be here to help parents facilitate that conversation and to learn more. So at this point, I would like to invite Ms. Melanie Mottershead to share the Be Smart presentation. This is something that PTAs can have and bring, as well as other community groups, faith groups. This is not limited to schools. This is a community-wide effort, as Ms. Cottfield alluded to in her comments. Ms. Mottershead.
Thank you, Superintendent Moore, Chair Mahaffey, board members. I want to thank you for your commitment to keeping our kids and our entire community safe and for allowing Be Smart to share this vital information with you tonight. Be Smart is a program developed by Every Town for Gun Safety Support Fund to bring together parents and all adults concerned about kids, guns, and safety. My name's Melanie Mottershead, and I've been a Be Smart volunteer since 2018. I'm a mother, an educator, and have a vested interest in keeping my kids and everyone else's kids safe from gun violence, both intentional and unintentional. kids safe from gun violence, both intentional and unintentional. Let's take a minute to watch this short video.
It's our responsibility to keep kids out of harm's way. Part of that is preventing them from getting their hands on guns. Every year, hundreds of kids and young people die because they get a hold of guns. So many of these tragedies, suicides, unintentional shootings, even school shootings could be prevented. What can you do about it? It's simple. If you own a gun, lock it up and encourage gun owners, you know, to do the same. Look, owning a gun is your right, but it's our responsibility to protect our kids and our communities. So please do your part. Be safe, be smart. We're in this together. Learn more about secure storage at besmartforkids.org.
Let's establish some common ground. We all want our kids to grow up happy and healthy. We each have the right to make responsible decisions about how to protect our homes, families, and communities, and that includes whether or not we want to have a gun in our home. And if we can prevent even one child gun death or injury, it is our responsibility to do so. The bottom line is that we are not here to talk about laws or policies, so let's set those aside. Be Smart is a program to bring together all adults concerned about kids, guns, and safety. We must break the silence around suicide. Here are some important resources to write down or take a picture of in case you or someone you care about needs help. We have handout materials with more information about how to get help if you do recognize these and other warning signs, and it includes the Suicide Prevention Hotline on besmartforkids.org. Before we begin, we will be talking about stories of gun violence and suicide, and we know living through these experiences is devastating. And hearing about them can be difficult as well. If you need to take a step away during the session to care for yourself, please do. We will share resources at the end of this session to seek additional support if needed. It's a heartbreaking fact that in the United States firearms are the leading cause of death for children. This is a public health crisis. More than 1,800 kids under the age of 18 are killed with guns every year, an average of five every day. When kids are killed with guns, the majority of these deaths, 54%, are homicides. That's 1,000 children per year. Additionally, nearly 700 kids die by firearm suicide each year, and 100 are unintentionally shot and killed. We are here today to talk about how we can prevent tragedies like that. A shocking 4.6 million kids in the United States live in a household with at least one loaded and unlocked gun. While school shootings and mass shootings typically make national headlines, almost all child unintentional shooting deaths occur in the home. The Secret Service found in incidences of gunfire on school grounds, 76% of school shooters acquired their firearm from the home of a parent or close relative. So listen, I know this is an emotional issue, and we all come from different walks of life. Many of you may be parents, some of you may be gun owners, and some of you may not be. Some of you have been impacted, personally impacted by gun violence, some of you may have personal experience with guns. We believe that most gun owners want to be responsible gun owners, so we are here today to talk about what all of us, gun owners and non-gun owners alike, can do to make sure kids and teens do not have unsupervised access to guns. I want to take a few minutes to talk specifically about what the consequences of unsecured guns looks like in our community. On this slide, you'll see just a few headlines from stories across our region, although we know there are many incidences that go unreported. In Benson of last year, a two-year-old found a gun in his dad's truck and unintentionally shot and killed himself. Earlier that week, a Cary High School student brought a gun on campus and fired it into a toilet. Luckily, no one was injured. And also last week, a Rollesville High School student was found with a loaded gun in his possession. Again, luckily, no one was hurt. In February of this year, two youths were injured in a shooting after they found an improperly stored gun in their home. And finally, a 15-year-old Raleigh teen acquired two guns and murdered five people, including his own brother. All four or five of these stories show the fallout when young people get their hands on unsecured guns. No story is quite the same, but all are tragic and all are preventable. But we can all take action in our homes and communities to keep kids safe. So even if you don't have a gun in your home, or if you do and you know that you're already practicing secure gun storage, what can you do right now? Together, we can learn to be smart. Let's start with S. Secure the guns in your homes and vehicles. 13 million households with kids contain at least one gun, and the majority of kids in gun-owning households actually know where the gun is stored. So what do I mean by securing guns? A gun should always be stored locked, unloaded, and with ammunition stored separately. This means they are absolutely inaccessible to kids. And make sure kids are never in the presence of unsecured guns. Remember hiding a gun is not securing a gun. We know that you may have specific questions about what secure storage looks like in practice, so here are some examples. These options are also available on besmartforkids.org. Contrary to popular belief, locking up guns does not prevent owners from readily accessing their guns. There's a common myth that storage devices negate the self-defense purpose of owning a gun by putting time-consuming barriers between the gun owner and their means of self-defense. The reality is that there are many affordable options for secure gun storage that provide owners access to guns in a matter of seconds while still preventing access by kids and people at increased risk of harming themselves or others. Further, it's possible that unsecured guns may actually increase the likelihood of crime and violence through an increased risk of gun theft. Locking up guns will help to reduce the risk of firearm suicide, unintentional firearm injury, and also help to prevent firearm theft. Did you know that two guns are stolen every 15 minutes? It's important to also remember to lock up guns in cars. More than half of stolen guns are taken from cars. Just putting a gun under a seat or in the glove compartment wouldn't be considered secure storage. There are car gun lock boxes available for purchase at most retail and sporting goods stores. Remember, secure storage means guns need to be locked, unloaded, and with ammunition stored separately. M. Model responsible behavior. Every law-abiding adult has the right to decide whether or not to have a gun in their home, but you can't rely on curious kids not to find a gun. Kids know where their parents store their guns, and more than a third reported handling their parents' guns, many doing so without the knowledge of their parents. Nearly a quarter of parents didn't know that their kids had handled the gun in their house. It is always an adult's responsibility to prevent unauthorized access to guns, not a curious child's responsibility to avoid guns. Talk to your kids about gun safety, but remember that is a precaution and not a guarantee. One study found that young children who go through a week-long gun safety training are just as likely as kids with no training to approach or play with a handgun when they find one. Modeling responsible behavior means that smart adults make sure that kids do not have the opportunity to access guns. That said, you can't control the environment that your kids are in at all times, so you should teach them not to touch a gun if they come across one, real or pretend, and give them the tools they need to get out of a dangerous situation and to alert an adult. As an adult, it's your responsibility to do everything you can to prevent them from getting in a dangerous situation to begin with. We have more information on best practices for talking to kids and teens about guns on besmartforkids.org. As we've mentioned, there are approximately 4.6 million kids in the United States living in a household with at least one loaded and unlocked gun. That's why you need to ask about firearms in other people's homes your child visits. The A in smart. As parents, before we send our kids over to someone else's house, we might ask about pets, pools, allergies, car seats, screen time, supervision, the list is endless. Asking about how parents secure their guns should be as routine as all others. Asking about guns in the home should be as natural as asking about any other safety issue. If it seems awkward at first, try making it part of your general safety conversation. You might try asking via email or text if you're uncomfortable at first, but the bottom line is that you need to ask. If you have guns in your home, how do you keep them stored? Let's talk about recognizing the role of guns in suicide, the R. Access to a gun can mean the difference between life and death. As our kids get older and more resourceful, you may need to consider taking another look at your storage methods. If you've been using a simple cable lock, you may want to think about getting a gun safe. We all know how curious kids can be, so as they get older and more resourceful, you will need to act accordingly. Also, if you know your loved one is in distress, you may want to consider temporarily removing a gun from your home. It's important to consider that firearm suicide is uniquely lethal. 90% of suicide attempts using a gun end in death, and half of the suicides in the United States are gun suicides. 70% of people who survive a suicide attempt will never attempt suicide again. So if you consider temporarily removing a gun from your home, how can you do that? And where can you bring it? Local law enforcement may be willing to temporarily store your gun. Some licensed gun dealers or gun ranges may be willing to temporarily store your gun. Or you could temporarily store your gun in the home of a friend or family member. To manage the risk for that friend or family member, you should lock any guns you transfer and not provide the key or code. The bottom line is that most people who attempt suicide don't die unless they use a gun. In fact, 90% of suicide attempts with a gun result in death, a much higher fatality rate than any other means of self-harm. The National Youth Survey conducted by the CDC showed that 20% of high school students had seriously considered attempting suicide within the last year. One study showed that 41% of adolescents in gun-owning households reported having easy access to the guns in their home. As we discussed earlier, research shows that secure firearm storage is associated with a decreased risk of child firearm suicide. Here again are some important resources to write down or take a picture of in case you or someone you care about needs help. Some signs to look out for when concerned that a loved one may be suicidal are prolonged sadness and depression, changes in mood or behavior, hopelessness, sleeping too much or too little, withdrawing or isolation, aggression or agitation, increased alcohol or drug use, and talking about killing themselves. Additional materials with more information about how to get help if you do recognize these and other warning signs can be found on besmartforkids.org. Additionally, if you are a survivor of gun violence, we have resources available at momentsatt survive.org. Tell. That is the power of being smart. So how will you commit to be smart today? Sharing the Be Smart message, the way we will save lives is by spreading awareness. So I'd love for you to take just a few minutes to think about who you are going to tell to be smart today. While we're thinking about it, do you have a speaker for your next Board Advisory Council meeting? Be Smart has already presented to Chair Mahaffey's district and will present to Dr. Ng's district and Ms. Waters' district later this month. Spreading this message to our school and PTA leaders is a great first step in spreading awareness. You can also text SMART to 64433. Be smart. Secure the guns in your homes and vehicles. Model responsible behavior around guns. Ask about unsecured guns in other people's homes. Recognize the role of guns in suicide, and tell your peers to be smart. Please feel free to contact our Be Smart leaders, Kristin Michaels or Shannon Klug, if you're interested in bringing Be Smart to your local group or organization. Thank you again, school board members, Superintendent Moore, for encouraging our Wake County community on how we can work together to keep our kids safe and be smart.
Thank you, Ms. Mottershead. And the safety of our schools, our students, and our staff is a community-wide effort. In our work session today, we shared what we're doing at the school level, and this presentation is to provide a resource for parents and community members to be able to have conversations in their homes and throughout their communities to protect all of our students that come into our schools as well as our staff. So thank you for taking the time to be here today, and I encourage folks to reach out. And again, this presentation is on our meeting agenda so folks are able to access it, so We now move on to public comment. Speakers commenting on items on the night's agenda will be heard first. All other speakers will be heard in order of sign. Oh, yeah. I'm glad you're reading the agenda, Jonathan. I skipped a part. I'm so sorry. We do have one more information item. My apologies to our public comment people who have been waiting for some time. We do have our superintendent updates. Superintendent Moore.
Very brief. Thank you. My updates are really just to cover, again, the items that were covered in the work session earlier today in case those that are listening to the board meeting did not have an opportunity to listen to the work session. We had two items in our work session today. The first one was an update from our safety and security team, Russ Smith and his folks to just, in particular, in the light of having five new board members, to present them with the process and the recommendations and letting our community know there is a link online to a third-party security assessment that was conducted in the past year or two, and some of the recommendations that have come out of that. There is a public presence of that overall report online. There will be additional work around that for the district for some time to come in terms of how we set our priorities. And the next meeting of the Safety and Security Committee of the Board is at the end of February, so that work will continue. The second item on our work session today was an update with the board of the legislative priorities, work that began at the last work session that was continued in the board retreat over the weekend. Staff gathered the feedback from boards and put together sort of a mock draft, looked for the legislative priorities. We have taken the feedback from today's work session. We have made those changes, and the new version is loaded in simbly now. Thank you, Melissa, so that you can take a look at it as it is on the action agenda for this evening. That concludes my updates.
That was fast. Thank you, Lisa and Ms. During public comment, folks will speak for up to three minutes. A green light will light up at the podium when you begin. A yellow light and an audible tone will signal when there are 30 seconds remaining in your time, and a red light along with an audible tone will signal when your time is up, and the next speaker will be called. In the interest of maintaining civility and decorum, speakers are encouraged to address their comments to the board and to refrain from personal attacks and insults directed at board members, the board, staff, or members of the general public. Please remain at the podium during your speaking time. Any materials you wish to share with the board should be handed to the board attorney either before or after your comments. either before or after your comments. We have two speakers signed up today, and our first speaker, I have to go to another,
Hello, my name is Susan Book, and I wanted to just remind us all about our school counselors, that not only are they wonderful members of our staff, but there's far too few of them, and they don't earn enough, which leads me to a way that we should really recognize them, which is by looking at your legislative agenda and asking for the full funding of our schools through the Leandro remedial plan. I ask the board to recognize the importance of this moment, a moment where North Carolina is ranked forty-eighth in funding level and dead last in funding effort. Now is not the time to be shy. We know that we are inefficiently, inadequately funded, and worse yet, inequitably funded. I urge the board to adopt the entire Leandro Court Comprehensive Remedial Plan as part of its legislative agenda. The plan covers everything, to adding instructional assistance, mental health supports, like social workers, as well as our textbook supplies and materials. Our state has a constitutional obligation to fund our schools. Since Leandro has not been acted on by our legislative branch, the court has mandated funds from our executive branch as well. So this year, I ask that you demand from Governor Cooper's office action to release the funds there as well. The crisis is already here, lack of certified teachers, issues with special education, children in mental health crises. Let your voice be heard in both the halls of the legislature and the governor's mansion, and demand that every child receive a sound, thus basic, education. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Latham Mohammed.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm here as usual, y'all know me, as a mother of a Wake County public school student currently and two graduates. Happy to celebrate with you all Southeast Magnet's honor, Southeast Magnet High School's honor as a Magnet School of Distinction, since that's where my son attends as a junior. Also stand before you as the co-executive director of Education Justice Alliance, which is an organization that has been pushing for the last ten years for educational equity within Wake County public schools. And then lastly, I'm wearing my third hat, which is as the co-chair of the Steering Committee for Every Child NC, which is a statewide organization fighting for equitable funding for our public schools. And so I'm here to ask you all, you received a letter, or email, excuse me, February first from my colleague Sarah Montgomery, asking you all as board members of Wake County public schools to send a letter to our governor and to our legislators that affirms your commitment to ensuring that our children receive the funding that they need in order to have an equitable educational experience in Wake County and across North Carolina. I'm happy, when I went to the agenda this morning, to see the legislative agenda that you all have developed and to hear the discussions you had during the work session today, which was, you know, centered around ensuring that some of those priority students that are named in the Leandro lawsuit get funding. And so I just urge you all, as Susan just urged you all, to take the next step. Back last year, you signed a letter and sent it out for your commitment to Leandro as a school board, and I recognize faces have changed at the board table, but I also believe that all of you all who sit before us as elected officials have our children's best interests at heart, and for us to be a state that's forty-eight in funding is ridiculous. This state can do so much better, but it requires pressure from all of us, from parents, from young people, from educators, from elected officials like you all. So I urge you all, if you have not taken a look at the letter that we shared with you all on February first, to do so, and I ask you to stand with us in asking our governor and our elected officials at the General Assembly to hold true to fully funding the Leandro plan. Thank you.
This concludes public comment. At this time, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The consent items pass. We now move on to our action items, which begins in policy, and that is with policy sixty-four-ten, Organization of the Purchasing Function, on first reading with Mr. Mark Quiners and Ms. Deborah Wallace. Welcome, Ms. Wallace.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Mahaffey, Superintendent Moore, and members of the board. I'm here to present to you the first reading of policy sixty-four-ten, Organization of the Purchasing Function. This is a new policy created by the North Carolina School Boards Association as part of their policies to lead the school's manual and as part of the Policy Migration Project. When given final board approval, it will replace portions of the current policies, eighty-three-ten specification, eighty-three-eleven specification detail, eighty-three-seventy inspection and testing, and eighty-three-eighty receiving and inspecting. The policy was reviewed, excuse me, the policy was reviewed at the October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two policy committee meeting. Tonight, we request the board's approval of the first reading of policy sixty-four-ten, Organization of the Purchasing Function.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you, Ms. Wallace and your team, for explaining the distinct differences, both those things that are already in state policy and the way that we should structure Wake County. And I would like to make a motion that we pass first reading.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Waters. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right. Ms. Wallace is going to stay with us for the next board policy, sixty-four-twenty, Contracts with the Board.
Thank you. For the second policy I'm presenting to you tonight for first reading is policy sixty-four-twenty, Contracts with the Board. This is also a new policy created by the North Carolina School Boards Association as part of their policies to lead the school's manual and as part of the Policy Migration Project. When given final board approval, it will replace part of the current policy, eighty-three-sixty, Purchase Contract Administration. It was reviewed at the January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three policy committee meeting. Tonight, we request the board's approval of the first reading of policy sixty-four-twenty, Contracts with the Board.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Ms. Johnson-Hossler.
I move that we approve board policy sixty-four-twenty.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Waters. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Okay, moving to board policy sixty-four-thirty, Purchasing Requirements for Equipment, Materials, and Supplies for First Reading. Ms. Wallace.
Thank you. Policy sixty-four-thirty, this is a new policy created by the North Carolina School Board Association as part of their policies to lead the school's manual and as part of the Policy Migration Project. When given the final board approval, it will replace portions of current policies, eighty-three-ten specification, eighty-three-eleven specification detail, and eighty-three-sixty Purchase Contract Administration. It was reviewed at the October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty policy committee meeting. Tonight, we request the board's approval of the first reading of policy sixty-four-thirty, Purchasing Requirements for Equipment, Materials, and Supplies.
I move that we pass first reading of board policy sixty-four-thirty.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Dr. Ng. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And finally, Ms. Wallace, board policy sixty-four-fifty, Purchase of Services, First Reading.
Thank you. This is also a new policy created by the North Carolina School Boards Association as part of their policies to lead the school's manual and as part of the Policy Migration Project. When given final board approval, it will replace part of current policy, eighty-three-sixty-one, Service Contract Administration. It was reviewed at the January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three policy committee meeting. Tonight, we request the board's approval of the first reading of policy sixty-four-fifty, Purchase of Services.
Chair Mahaffey, I move that we approve first reading board policy sixty-four-fifty.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and multiple seconds. Any questions or discussion? Yes, Ms. Caulfield.
Hi, and this may not be necessarily with the policy in approving it, but does the board as a whole, do we review all bids that come in for services? Or is it something that is worked internally and then comes to us for approval? I'm just trying to understand the process.
You want? Thank you. No, actually, the bids are reviewed by the stakeholders and the end-users, and then together as a review committee, they put together a recommendation that comes forward to the board.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Wallace.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to move on to our board legislative priorities. As Superintendent Moore indicated, this has been loaded back into assembly. So board members, if you hit the House button at the top of the page and re-enter the meeting, you will now, you will then see that the paperclip is there showing the new draft. And again, many, many thanks to Ms. Luton and Ms. Allen for getting this loaded so quickly. We're just going to take a second to review. I'm going to give you all time to read so we can take a look out loud. Again, adding information about longevity pay in column A, speaking more on the Teaching Fellows program in column B, adding cost instead of, or talking about reduced lunch benefits, talking about school safety funding was added, flushing out the AIG piece, and adding support for gun safety legislation under column D. And I've noticed that Ms. Waters' suggestion of adding more inclusivity in photos was also a part of this. So we give everyone a moment to look over it, and then if someone would like to make a motion to approve the legislative agenda, we will move forward.
Chair Mahaffey.
Yes, Ms. Edmonds.
I'm not seeing the suggestion from Mr. Bloomberg about the expansion of reduced lunch. I'm not seeing that change. I do see the other changes, am I?
So it's in the title, but I think we should add it into the actual description, so maintain the expansion of reduced-cost lunch benefits. So it is in the title, but we should add it as well to, under the Y. So that's just a little technical change. Yes.
I think we can trust that Ms. Luton and her team will be able to make that quick change to add that into the Y and not just the cost. I don't think that should impede any approvals.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Swanson.
I move that we accept the legislative agenda. If everyone has read it, sorry, I was looking at Ms. Waters.
You can make the motion. We can give folks more time.
Sure, yes. I move that we accept the legislative agenda with the modification that there were.
All right, we have a motion to approve and accept the legislative agenda from Mr. Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second from Ms. Waters and Ms. Johnson-Hossler. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Hershey, speak now or forever. Hold your piece.
It's fine. I just would have worded something different, but it says the same.
Okay, all right. Ms. Caulfield.
And the increasing funds for the AIG students, Superintendent Moore had indicated it might be helpful to have a date reference. Were we going to do that, or?
I have to action check it.
Okay, okay.
I think what I can, what we can say is, once we find the date, we can send it to the board, and if you are, I think if we have, if, then we can add it.
We can certainly make sure that it's added to the talking points once it's found, even if it's not a part of this document. I think it's an impactful thing, but I know the nineteen ninety-three funding was something that we had talked about years ago in special education funding, so that was a sticking point, but we'll find out. Okay. Further questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the legislative agenda, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Okay, thank you all very much. Thank you. We now move on to closed session. If there could be a motion to consider confidential personnel information protected under GS-143-318.11A1 and A3 and Fletcher versus Wake County Public School System IC File Number nineteen-zero-one-one-nine-four-three, and to consult with the Board of Education Attorney and preserve the attorney-client privileges protected in GS-143-318.11A3 due to current litigation, e.g., by and through LG and EG versus Wake County Board of Education 22EDC-04637. You can just say so moved. You don't have to repeat all that.
So moved.
All right, is there a second? All right. Any discussion, comments, questions? All right, all in favor of moving, yes, sir? Okay. All, yeah? Why we didn't explicitly say Leandro? Absolutely. As was discussed in our work session and during our retreat, addressing the comprehensive plan is kind of a nonstarter in the legislature, using the L-word. So we chose not to, in our legislative agenda, and that was our reason for not saying it, but certainly have lifted up elements of it. So I don't think that was out of pocket at all. All right. All those in favor of going into closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, we are now in closed session. Thank you.